Welcome to the May 12th meeting of the Planning Board. This is our 23rd meeting of the fiscal year. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the chairman, and with me are...
Alex Whiteside, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Peter Drexel.
Diane Coligan, Secretary.
Bill Clark, Planning Director.
Excellent. First item on the agenda is approval of the past minutes. I understand we are holding two sets of minutes, but we do have the minutes of May 5th in front of us. Anybody have any comments, questions?
I have one comment.
Okay.
I thought the minutes were pretty good. The paragraph, the last paragraph before public comment says, it concludes with, "It became clear that compliance with the PUD zoning for this district will require a redesign of the project." And I think that that is maybe a fair conclusion, but it's not a, there was no vote taken that it had to be redesigned. So what I would say is this.
Okay.
To replace that entire paragraph, Mr. Daniel reviewed the applicant's response to Mr. Whiteside's analysis. The response and the analysis are appended to the minutes. The board discussed the various points without resolution. Applicant indicated that a revised plan would be presented at the June 9th meeting.
Did he actually indicate that we'd receive a revised plan, or that we would just simply repeat further information?
I don't remember. I thought that he was going to do a revised plan.
In my mind, that would make sense, but I don't think he said he would submit a plan. He would be coming to that meeting again.
At the June 9th meeting.
Indicated that he would have further comment.
Further comment, I think, would be acceptable with our memory of the event.
That further comment would be presented at the June 9th meeting.
That works. Anything else?
Not that I don't agree that...
I think a revised plan would be...
A good idea.
No, I mean, not that I don't agree that it became clear that something had to happen.
Right.
So I'm going to give this to Pete.
Okay.
The analysis...
Should we approve as amended, or should we hold them over?
If everybody's comfortable with what Alex said, then we can approve as amended, and just have Diane make the changes and give us a final copy.
I'm going to give this to Pete. I'm happy to do whatever the Secretary thinks is...
I think it would be appropriate to accept them as amended and just make the changes.
Is that a motion?
I may move that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent.
We don't want Pete to fall behind on his first meeting as Secretary.
That's right. Okay, next item on the amendment, on the amendment on our agenda are the future meetings, which are May 26, June 9, and 23, all at 6:30. Bill, are they all here?
They're all here.
They're all here, okay. Excellent. Next item is citizens speak. Now, we have three public hearings, 36 Central Avenue, 310 Granite Avenue, and 683, 685 Brushhill Road. So if we have citizens wishing to speak on any of those, I'd ask that they hold their comments to the public hearings. If not, we're happy to have people come in front of us. All right? No citizens? In which case, I think we'll move the town planners' report up a bit, because our first public hearing is not scheduled until 6:45. Bill?
The dealing issues with the, on the wind turbine. We did a DEP sidewalk last week after the appeal from Corey Hills. Doing some plan modification that is going to wind up being requested by DEP. Under green communities, I'm working on the contract for the tap between the town and the state. East Milton parking and access study. The Business Citizen Advisory Committee met last night. They reviewed the committee's priorities and provided comment to the draft final report. This is all in preparation for the third and final general public meeting, which is next Wednesday, May 18, at 6:30 at Cunningham Hall. I sent, I sent by email to this board and to the selectmen the agenda, the notice of the meeting, and the press release that describes it. The committee itself has actually come up with its priorities, and since we do have time, I'll go back and give what those things are.
That'd be great, thank you.
Basically, we, they chose immediate, intermediate, and long-range issues. Under the immediate, it's something that could happen in zero to six months to start. And we had a 1A and a 1B. 1A is wayfinding and parking management. Wayfinding deals with signage, street markings. Parking management is where those spaces are, enforcement of the current spacing, and signage that is consistent throughout, so that we don't have mishmash of 15 minutes, 30 minutes, one hour, two hours. We have a consistent set of signs. 1B is, it's called a hybrid plan. A hybrid plan is something that was originally drawn up by a citizen group, pointed by the selectmen back in the '90s, and it was reworked a little bit by one of the members on the committee who did the project as part of his thesis for his master's in transportation engineering. And our consultant has taken and tweaked both of those, put them together, and come up with one plan. It ultimately would be using the existing parking deck area and the Adams Street area. You would have the left-hand turn that would allow you to go from in front of the post office down Granite Ave to go north. The rest of it, all the rest of the traffic would go around the existing, what is now park. It would create two parking lots and a park in the middle, so that there is still a park there. All of the existing ceremonial stones stay in that area, and it, it gives set pedestrian crosswalks, and all the lights wind up being synced up. Under intermediate...
Bill, how many new parking spaces under that plan?
Over 40. I can't give you the exact number, it's over 40.
Over 40 new spaces?
New spaces. Under intermediate, there'll actually be some work that will have to be done in concert with the planning board. That is zero to 24 months, and it is looking at creating a overlay, a professional district overlay for Mechanic Street, which would allow the houses on that street to have professional offices in their first floor, because the majority of those houses on the left-hand side, as you go down, have plenty of room behind them for onsite parking. The other piece of zoning there was to extend the commercial district along Basset Street to Franklin Street. There are three houses that take place after the old Osborne Building, which is, I believe, bodyworks. After that, there is a two-family house, and then two single-family houses. It's to extend the commercial district up there, and that can be either change it to commercial, which is what is adjacent to it, or we could put another overlay to that district. Three out of the four houses in there are owned by the businesses in the front, so it's just, it becomes the intermediate term item for, for the committee. On the long-term was acquisition of properties, and it is not on their recommendation. Any thought that they could acquire properties would take much more than 18-plus months. It is not one of their recommended items. Also, on the long-term, the potential for a ramp off the expressway beyond East Milton Square, up somewhere by the parking ride, that would then allow traffic that was going to State Street or coming back to the other side of Milton, that they wouldn't have to necessarily go through the square, clog up the square. There is the, they want to look at the long-term, look at potentially taking Granite Ave and shrinking Granite Ave to one lane in each direction with a bikeway on either side. It would be to slow the traffic down in that area, to allow for the residential use that's there, and it also would lead bicycles from the square to the Napontia Greenway.
Going back to the hybrid plan, Bill, with the 40 spaces?
Yep.
Would any of the deck green area be absorbed in that for parking?
It would be a reconfiguration of what is there now. The exact number of what's green now and what's green in the real plan, we'll have for Wednesday night.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Any changes to traffic patterns?
It would take away Adams Street, and it would force all the traffic to go around. If you were here when they built the deck...
You mean Adams Street would disappear?
Adams Street would disappear.
Become discontinuous.
Well, I'm not exactly sure how you would, how you would rename that particular piece, but Adams Street would get cut off there, and now all the traffic would go around the new plan. It's the same plan that, it's the same traffic that took place when the deck was, was being built, and the vast majority of people in the crowd last night were for it. The majority of the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee was for it. The commercial, the merchants in the area are for that plan.
What about the two-way streets on either side of, you know, Edge Hill Road and the other one that I'm temporarily blanking on, on the other side of where Jack Rabbit is?
Boulevard.
That's it, thank you, Boulevard. I knew it was a B, I just couldn't, it was a temporary stop there. Are they going to still remain both 2A, or are they going to make one one-way in one direction, one one-way in the other?
There's actually, more discussion needs to take place on those. There was discussion at a couple of the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee meetings that talked about making one one-way, making the other one one-way in the other direction. If you did that, what you provide yourself with is more parking on Edge Hill Road.
Right.
How many spaces, that's still to be determined, but it would actually provide better parking for the post office than what's available on Hollis right now.
Yeah, I also remember them discussing as possible service zone parking for people working in the square.
Yep.
Who wouldn't have to access their cars.
We're still looking at it, but it, it's one of those things that it's going to depend on what happens with some of the cut-through traffic, particularly Governor's Road. There's a, there's a proposal by the people who live on Governor's Road to put rocks between, on Edge Hill Road, that prevents the traffic to flow straight through Governor's Road. It would make everybody have to go down, turn around, and come back. There's a public meeting coming with the Traffic Commission to talk to people from Grafton and Plymouth. We don't know how that's going to come out.
Right.
The whole thing goes to the selectmen after the public meeting with the other two streets. Which also then has a ripple effect that'll go back to the other, you know, do we make them one-way, don't we make them one-way?
Right.
If we make, if we make Edge Hill coming up, that would mean that everybody going down Boulevard has to go through the square to turn around and come back up. So that might not work. We're not sure how that's going to work right now.
Okay, so it's still under consideration?
Yes.
Any other questions? Because we're on to our public hearing.
Just quickly, it seems to me, reading the traffic reports, the only two things that really improved the traffic condition there were either the rotary...
Roundabout.
Roundabout. Or, or making the Adams Street across the expressway two-way. Those are the ones that improved traffic. So this one, the idea of bringing Adams and make them go around like that, that's going to make traffic worse, and I think that's what their traffic studies show.
I, I think there is some improvement, but there isn't a lot of improvement. But it does address parking and pedestrian needs.
What about the...
The roundabout absolutely is the best for moving the amount of traffic down there. The issue with that is going to be getting it through, getting, getting the concept that, that a roundabout actually works. If you're in the business, you know it works. If you look at it conceptually, people think of the Cape Cod rotaries, and all they see is a horror show. If you go back and talk to traffic engineers today, they, they like it. They work in New York State, they work in Florida. There's a few around Mass that, that work, but we don't have enough of them to be able to tell people, "Go look here, go look there." I mean, we could point them towards North Andover, it works. We could point them towards the yellowway circle, it works. Everybody has its, all of those projects have their own nuances and, and need to, little things that need to be worked out. There's places in Florida that, that use them, that swear by them. They have incredible amounts of traffic in the wintertime, like we have here in the summer, and they claim it works, so...
Except for more details, we should have a meeting.
But that's not, that's not what the committee felt was the best, that's not what the Police Department here has felt was the best, so...
All right. So the, sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so the meeting is next Wednesday, May 18, 6:30 at Cunningham Hall?
Yes.
For anybody who's interested.
Bill, I walk there every day, as you know, walk back and forth every day. Sometimes I'm working down there for all day. Parking by employees is a huge problem down there.
Yes.
As you know, okay.
Yep.
That can be an eight-hour day for them, and they'll take the best...
But a lot of it is going to, a lot of it needs to be addressed with signage, a lot of it needs to be enforced.
Enforcement.
And, yes, there needs to be a very big discussion on enforcement.
Yep.
We'll save that for another time. So, 36 Central Avenue. Paul, do you want to, are you ready to join us?
Sure.
Great.
Thanks, Bill, for the report. Good evening, my name is Paul Sullivan, I'm here representing Oremore Enterprises, the developer of 36 Central. We have a few final modifications to the exterior grounds of the building, and I'd just like to go through them tonight, if I could.
Sounds good.
Might start at the front of the building, where the, the original handicap ramp was shown, and it's quite a bit shorter now, so there's a grade between the sidewalk and the, the arcade was only a few inches different, so we didn't need to wind the handicap ramp as long as, as the original plan had showed. So this, we're running the, the cover-proposed ramp will be perpendicular to the arcade and run out to the sidewalk, and, which will allow additional plantings on both sides of that walkway, and we've shown them in the plan that was submitted. All these plantings have basically come from the original planning schedule that was on the site. We just reused the same variety of plants that was along the brook in the rear. So going counterclockwise around the building, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the ramp or the plantings there.
Well, just keep going, we'll jump into this necessary.
Okay, on the right side of the building, the plantings that showed in the original landscape plan will remain, with the exception of where the emergency access door opens up. We're making some changes there. The door does swing on the property at 36 Central, doesn't project into 42 Central. The original plan actually had some air-conditioned condenser pads shown on that, the right rear location of the building. We didn't need those, because all the condensers are on the roof of the building, so we eliminated those. We're proposing a crushed stone walkway for the emergency access, and that runs to the back to a retaining wall that will have a couple of steps in it to go up to the grade of, the existing grade that was around the tree, we're maintaining that grade around the tree by this landscape retaining wall. And we've...
Does it illuminate that nightfall, that walkway?
Will it be? Or just an emergencies?
I don't know if there's any proposed lighting for it at this time. Suppose we could put some light by the...
It's just an emergency access, or egress.
I know, but...
I don't know if it's possible to have a couple of pack lights on the building, that if the emergency, if the door opens, they go on, because you certainly wouldn't want them on there, you know, shining in a neighbor's light all the time. And if they could be connected to the door, so when the door opens in an emergency, those lights go on.
Sure, that'll help.
Yeah.
Yes, I will bring it up with Michael Moore, and I assume that could be incorporated to the plan. We did pull the wall back, the first plan that, at the last meeting, this retaining wall in the back actually was onto the property at 42 Central, so we pulled that back and we put a curb into the wall. We're trying to maintain the existing grade around the tree, is the purpose of the wall. Going down to the right rear corner where the benches were, the original proposed, for the benches was close to the brook, and we felt that it might be better to pull them back a little bit. We created a previous pad that would just be like a crushed stone material, and we're proposing to put the benches on two sides of that, facing downstream towards the brook and the trees on the other side of Pine Tree Brook. And we've also created a crushed stone walkway that goes to the parking lot, and we were able to create a little bit of space between the final parking space and the wall, so that there's about a three or four-foot wide walkway that will be called out, and for anybody who wants to go and sit at the benches. And then, on the rear of the building, the parking lot, the space is pretty much the same configuration that was in the proposed plan. I guess the previous plan we submitted at the last meeting, they had one extra space on the left rear corner, and we corrected that, there's only six spaces there. And then you get around to the area where the elevator entrances, there's a handicap space there. The original plan showed some kind of curb there. The slab of that entrance is right at the same grade as the parking lot, and we didn't think a step would be helpful in that situation, especially for handicap access through there. So we've eliminated that step, and it's, it's pretty much flush. And then as you come up the driveway, the, the original plan on the nail side, we had a planting bed somewhat to hide the building there, and it's, it was raised, and some areas, and other areas, it was a curb. It's a slope, it slopes down there, there's a foundation. The building's brick, but then the foundation starts showing as you go down the grade, slopes off going down the driveway, more and more foundation was exposed, so we thought it might be nice to put a small retaining wall, and have, have the same plants that were originally proposed there, and try to hide the foundation a little bit. And then when we came to the other side, we thought it might, the original plan had a brick planter, and after speaking to the masons, they didn't think the brick might hold up too well with automobile traffic there. So we're proposing to use a precast stone product that's kind of a neutral color, slightly grayish-beige, and, and it would be the same material that we use on the left and the right side of the driveway, and it's also the same material over by the sycamore tree in the back right corner. So all that precast block retaining wall would be, would be the same material and color, be consistent.
Did you bring a sample in with you?
Uh, should have, but they're, they weigh about 100 pounds apiece, so...
It's what was out there when you did the sidewalk, that same, that same block, it's out there.
Eddie?
Nothing.
Okay. All right.
So what we did on the plantings that proposed on the right side, one of the advantages of having a retaining wall rather than just a curb there is we could raise the grade a little bit. There's about half the foundation of the parking garage is exposed going down that side of the building, and by, building a small retaining wall, not too high, it allows us to have a raised bed and plantings that will screen that level out. It kind of pulls the building down, so it doesn't look so tall, was one of the ideas that we had, so... Those plans are pretty much match what was proposed on the left side of the driveway. And then in the front, there's some plantings in front of the building, again, up beside where the handicap ramp was, and we're just intend to plant as it was shown in the original landscape plan.
Now, on the, that left side elevation that you were just talking about with the planters there, were you not going to carry the brick all the way down to the foundation? You're just covering the brick where the stone was and leaving the foundation exposed?
Uh, no, the brick is going to go right down the grade of this, right of the grade of this...
All right, and then you'll have the plants in front of the brick?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
At the last meeting where this was presented, the board asked me to go out and, you know, review this, and give my recommendations, and I did send a memo out, which I think everybody got, and I, I looked at the site plan, the proposed modifications, and compared it to the approved site plan, and made some notes, and then I went out in the field and met with Paul and Michael Moore, and we walked around the entire building, looking at all those recommendations, and what Paul presented is consistent with, with, you know, the recommendations that I came up with after going through there, through this. I think it, you know, makes a more attractive site, and will allow them to get the work completed. The, the only place that has a little bit of a, I might say, negative visual impact is near that emergency exit door, because originally there were some plantings in there, but there were also the condensers. Because of having to keep a clear area for the emergency walkway, there really isn't any space for any plantings anymore, and, you know, the, the thing that really probably works and is maintainable the most is the crushed stone surface, and that doesn't face the public at all. Nobody really sees that the only person who might be impacted by lesser plantings is a little bit of, of 42 Central Avenue, but there's really no other way. The, the emergency access door was required by the building commissioner, and then, then you have to, they would either have to negotiate a permanent easement with 42, so that people could come out the door and go on the driveway at 42 Central, or they have to stay on this property, which sends them down toward, you know, the sycamore tree. So, you know, that was really the only solution that, that worked in there. But other than that, I think the, you know, all the changes that are shown here and that are discussed in my memo improved the overall plan of the site, so I think that works well. The only comment I would have, they didn't have the planting plan at the time we walked, and this came later, and there's a couple of things... and this came later, and there's a couple of things I would ask them to substitute, but, you know, I would be happy just to, the board approves. There's a couple of things that I don't think are the best for that location, and so I would suggest a couple alternatives.
Paul, in the left driveway going in, the left-hand side, it says relocate curb openings.
I think that should be even pulled back further than, I know that's just a sketch area, but there'll be DPW handling that, I think. I'd go as wide as you can get there.
Sure.
Because that's a little bit tight, twenty feet is tight, you know, so if they had a nice sweep to go in, it would help, but that's DPW. You can tell them I recommended that.
Just speaking about that entrance, one of the things we had talked to Mr. Jackson about at the site was, we had originally proposed to paint the driveway prior to coming up to the sidewalk, and he suggested maybe signage, we're going to put a stop sign there anyways, that was part of the original plan, and that maybe along with the stop sign, we could, we could put a pedestrian warning about pedestrians crossing on that signage there. We are still planning on doing the textured sidewalk at that point, so-
Where the sidewalk crosses the driveway would be a texture. I dissuaded them from painting on that because with the steepness of it, that paint can get slippery. If it was a flat area, it wouldn't bother me, but when you're, it's a fairly significant grade, and I think that can make the driveway more slippery, so I suggested that they not do that.
That makes sense. Anything else? Nothing else from the board?
I just think, Paul, on the driveway going in again-
Yes.
I think eventually we might have to put a few, no parking signs along there, eventually.
Out on the street-
If it gets to be an issue, yeah.
Because you have to let the safety vehicles get them out of there. Somebody wants to start parking there, it could become habitual, you know?
Yeah, on the, on the hillside, I think the spaces tell back pretty good distance. I think there's a handicap space there, and I think it's set back from the curb.
You're talking about the actual twenty-foot wide driveway, if somebody wants to pull up against that wall and park and run into the store.
Right.
I think that's an enforcement that would be, because there is enough width there that somebody'd say, oh, I can park there for five minutes and go run an errand.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, to put a parking sign there.
Or if necessary, I wouldn't put it up initially, because that just cluttered things up, which we'll need in-
Eventually you'll-
We keep an eye on it.
Yes.
Anything else from the board?
I think we're getting there, huh?
If not, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments on this?
I will finish, because there was the materials that you were going to go over.
Oh, that list. Sorry, yes. This is just a summary of, did you get Paul a copy?
Yep.
Okay, so this is just a summary of the materials as you presented to us at the last meeting that we held a discussion. I can walk us through it, or you can let us know. The one question that I did have was, I have the color of the paint for the lifespan trim as sailcloth, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that Ben, it is Benjamin Moore?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I thought it was, but it wasn't positive. Okay, so, did you have a chance to read over it? Did you have any changes? Was that substantially as you'd represented it?
Yes, I believe it is.
All right, so the lifespan trim, certain elements of the foundation to be siding where it matches the upper floors, other elements to be brick veneer where that matches the upper floors, and other than that, it's just detailing the location of where that is for those who don't have a copy.
Yeah, I think the only item is, instead of certain, instead of hardy plank, we use a Certain Tead product, it's very similar.
Certain Tead, that's right. Okay, thank you.
It's an engineered siding product.
It's the trouble with these brand names, is suddenly you start using one for everything.
So maybe just call it engineered siding or something.
Sure.
Paul, no flag on the front of the building over Central Avenue?
No, I think we're open to something like that.
I think it'd be spectacular.
Yeah.
Thirty feet out, maybe?
Yep.
Eagle flag in Cohasset, mention my name. Give the guys to talk to, Paul.
Sure.
Thirty feet out, you said?
Thirty feet out. Thirty feet on the angle forty-five.
Thirty feet out over the road? I don't think we can do that.
I'm not sure, I can't believe, of course, I don't think we can do that.
We could push anything beyond the property line.
It might touch Margaret's house if it was-
I think it would.
Margaret, do you want a flag touching your-
Sure.
Any questions on the materials?
What is the Certain Tead siding?
Instead of the hardy plank siding, it's the branding of Certain Tead.
The back, the back as well.
I don't know, I think they're already using the Certain Tead, I think we'd continue that.
I mean, there's no point in not specifying what they're going to use.
Yep.
Certain Teed, Certain Teed.
I believe so. C E R T A I N T E E D, okay.
Double E.
I said that, T E E D.
And then maybe we can just say as used on the rest of the building.
Yeah, well, that's why I said to match the upper floors.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, any other comments? In that case, we will now accept comments from the public.
Margaret Donovan, forty-one Central Avenue. I am pleased to see that the brick is going to come down in the front all the way to the ground along the sides. I think that's a major improvement in the appearance of that building, and I just want to clarify that the building is very architecturally attractive. My comments and complaints were directed to the size of the building. I thought then and I think now, it's too big for the lot. So, moving along, I've always thought that it was important that you have a streamlined look so that it wouldn't be broken up. The back is streamlined. It's that, I guess you'd call it that, hardy plank?
Certain Teed.
Whatever, but at least it's the same color all the way down with a different trim that blends in. I don't know what lifespan is, because this has been a lifespan going through this project. I would like an explanation of that, and then I'd like to talk about the color. Could tell me, tell me what lifespan is.
Lifespan is another engineered wood product. Typically for trim.
That's the same that we saw that they brought in.
The sample was there, and they had put-
And then it will be painted with, painted sailcloth.
Sailcloth.
Yep. Which is that off-white, it's not the blinding white that you've concerned about, it's an off-white.
Well, you know, I have to say that I was pleased when the buyer of the DeWolf building met with the neighbors and through the neighborhood meetings, got the color of that DeWolf building back to the color of the President DeWolf building instead of that bright red garish color that they brought for it first. And I think that was the result of the new owner of that property meeting with the neighbors. I have to say, we had one meeting, only one meeting, with Mr. Sullivan in this whole time, during this whole process, and that was in February of 2010. So that the neighbors never really did get a chance to talk about the materials, the colors, et cetera, as the Milton Hill residents got to do with the, with the DeWolf building. I mentioned before, and I'm going to mention it again, that the front still, I'm very pleased with the brick, and that does tone the building down a little bit. But the white is still, and you can call it off-white, and say it's not quite so white, it's very white. And so it makes, still makes the building look garish. I had suggested that the color of that, and I guess, what are you going to call it, a portico, this in front of the porch?
Arcade.
Okay, all right. I had suggested that it be the color of the putty that's over the windows in the brick section of the building. If I may pass a stand so that you could see. I think that would tone it down, and it certainly would blend in. It would be one less color, but it would blend in with the putty color above the windows in the brick section of the building, and I think would be very, very inviting. I had occasion to invite, I'd already told Kieran Moore that I would give him a tour of my house, and I did this past Monday. So, he wanted to know where the clock was, that the weights fell off, because that street is going to be built jackhammered again, and he also wanted to see the broken seam in the diamond window in the bathroom, and so he saw that. My house is inverted, so the kitchen is on the second floor, and he got a real good look at his building right through that kitchen window, and it does steer you, steer one in the face. So I would respectfully ask that some consideration be made to the color of the trim of the arcade. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Margaret, how's John?
I beg your pardon?
How's John?
He's better. He was in the hospital for two days, but he's putting around with his yacht right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
Can you say I want to turn, maybe I'll do this one next week?
Come on. He told me they were going to do it today, and when I went over, I said, where are they? And he said, we can have it, we can have it.
They asked us to wait till next week, so.
So I'll take down the clock and-
Next week, they'll be done.
Anyone else? All right. So, gentlemen, how do you feel about these changes? Are we comfortable with them? Do we have any more questions for Paul Sullivan?
No, I mean, I think, I think what we talked about is what we had talked about previously and proved previously. So I guess we could probably write up this and-
I'd be weary attaching this latest plan as an approved plan, because it just doesn't reflect what's really, you know, been talked about and agreed on, so I don't know if we just do it verbally, because I don't think we're going to get a plan.
Yeah, I agree in that this plan is only showing the modifications, but somebody quickly looking at it could just assume that this is the correct plan and not look at the, you know, this is a summary of the modifications, it's not the modifications with everything that we've already approved, so.
So I would think that maybe we just describe them verbally or do something in our permit.
I don't think that's possible, I think they need a plan.
Paul, can you, do you have a plan? Come on back up, so we can ask you some questions. Do you have a plan that shows everything? Everything that we've approved plus all of these modifications?
Unfortunately, our landscape architect passed away last year, so we haven't taken these changes. I mean, first, we wanted to make sure that they were going to be acceptable to the board before we, you know, transposed them into the original landscape plan, but-
What do you intend to transpose them to the original plan?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, that'd be helpful, because we need something to attach to the document.
Why don't you do that, and please, why don't you review it?
On the sailcloth versus the color of the lentils and all around the windows, how close is that? Can you-
The lentils are darker, more brown in them than the sailcloth. We obviously haven't painted anything out of the arcade yet.
Yeah, I didn't think you'd painted the arcade yet.
It's not even turned out yet, though. They're still working on it. But I can run it by them and see what they think, and-
I was just wondering, because, you know, there's obviously, there's a tradition of white trim around brick buildings, but my memory of the sailcloth, which is now that is a couple of months old, since we've seen the color?
It's pretty close.
That is, actually, sorry, I wasn't sure.
It doesn't have a second coat, so you don't get the deeper color, but-
So that's just the first coat of the sailcloth?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Okay. See, that's the trouble with color, Margaret, is it doesn't look as bright to me, but then we're also sitting in a basement, so, you know, it's the first coat and not the second. Can you have that, a second coat put on that before the next meeting, since you're going to have to bring the drawings back to us anyway, and then we can just review it one last time?
Sure.
All right. So for the next meeting, we need your plan, we need the sailcloth or that painted the second time, so everybody can see it with a second coat. Is there anything else, or can we start writing up for approval at the next meeting?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on the amendments and then begin, you know, writing the amendment and getting all the final pieces so that we can approve it. Make a motion we close the public hearing part of this.
All right. Do we have a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? Yes.
We have a question of color.
We do have a question of color.
And, I mean, if they're going to come into the hearing with new samples, it seems maybe we should keep the hearing open.
Except that the sailcloth color is one that was approved as part of the original submittal, you know, so all the building is sailcloth, and so this new area that we're adding, it seemed should be the same color, as opposed to tell and go back and-
But that's the whole thing. If we're, if we are going to make a decision on the color, we should make the decision. If, I mean, if we can do it tonight, we should do it tonight, but if people want more information about the color before making the decision, then-
It seems to me we made the decision on the color when we issued the original permit.
Part of the building's already painted.
It's already painted, you know, and that was what was approved as part of our original special permit. What the issue is, the new areas that are going to be the engineered wood as opposed to stone, are they the same color as we've already approved on the building? Are we, do we put a new color on part, half of the building?
The stone presumably would have been more the color of the lentil than the sailcloth, wouldn't it?
It might have been. They were actually proposing more of a gold stone, a stone that had tenths of gold and yellow in it than the one to the lentil. The lentil was more consistent one color.
Well, we have approved the stone too, which was different than what they're doing here, but that's thrown out. But that would mean then that we would have two different colors of paint on the building. On each facade, there would be an upper level color and a lower level color, and that doesn't make any sense to me, so I think the sailcloth-
That would not be visually consistent now.
So I think we should just approve the sailcloth color as the approved color for the building for all the wood trim.
Yeah, we actually have quite a few sails too, and we were kind of under the gun to finish this building in forty, forty-five days. The people who have to move into the building have sold their properties and are scheduled to move on the first of July, so. The, you know, if this change, it'd be difficult to get this resolved between now and next meeting, I think. I think the consistent trim color seems to make the most sense at this point.
I'm comfortable in making a color decision tonight, I just thought it might alleviate some of the concerns that have been expressed, to see it with a second coat on, but actually, by the time you do that, you probably could have put the second coat on, the first and second coat on what's actually there.
True.
I mean, I see a white manta there, that's bright white, and then I see the sailcloth, and that is a bright white.
He is going to give us a demonstration of a bright white versus sailcloth.
There's white, and there's off-white.
The other thing too is, I think the fact that it's on a main road will darken that color over time. Yes, exactly.
I think that's probably true.
All right.
But I mean, I, for myself, I think that a brick and white paint is a nice combination.
Very traditional.
And without someone saying that they think the building would be improved in appearance by changing its color, and I don't, I'm not sure I'd agree with that. So I look at that- So I, 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 I look at that color and I don't think that it should be too, especially after a little bit of weathering.
Yeah. Eddie, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. So are we all, all four of us comfortable with the color? Alright. In that case, I believe there's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So who wants to start writing this up for our next meeting?
Oh, well, I'll do some writing. What I would like you to do, Paul, is get the plans.
Combine?
Combine and get it over to Pete and, and I'm going to be assuming. And I don't need to see the plan because I'm gonna reference, I'm gonna reference the plan as showing what's gonna happen. Uh, and so that is going to be easy to do. And the plan itself is, uh, going to control.
You'll probably need the number of sheets and name of sheets in these modifications.
There's only gonna be one sheet, isn't there?
Well, there's all the building elevations that have changed.
Right.
Right.
So all those building plans that have changed, then both the site plan and the landscape plan will change.
Yep. Okay. I'm mad that site plan amended landscape plans.
And amended elevations.
Two or three plans of the building elevation?
No, he got them onto one, so.
Oh, okay.
So this is actually the amended one. So three sheets, we should have three sheets.
Is that sufficient? Yeah, I think the landscape plan was all one.
Well, it's almost sufficient. I mean, you need to actually identify, the materials aren't actually identified on this. So you need to identify the materials, yeah, on the plan.
There'll be amended building elevation plan, amended site plan, and amended landscape plan.
Yep.
Yes.
Amended building elevation plan. Oh, okay, the elevation, right. Okay.
Okay. Alright, so our next meeting, Paul, is the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
And we have every hope to conclude this.
Assuming everything is in order, we should be able to sign off on it.
Great.
Alright.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is three ten Granite Avenue. Mr. Sheffield?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield and I'm pleased to represent the owner of Milton Gas Station. Uh, we had meeting, uh, two meetings on this and, uh, uh, it was asked that we supply an updated plan to show, uh, the parking spaces that are consistent with the prior site plan approval and also the location of the pumps. Um, you have the plan in front of you. I have it here. What we've done is actually moved it a full twelve feet so that there'd be greater access to the parking spaces that are on the South Lily side of the property. Uh, we continue to have the thirteen spaces that we've had in the, in the past and they are now shown on the plan. And I have prepared, uh, uh, an amendment for your consideration.
I see the canopy is very definitely not near the line of the sidewalk as well.
No, it is not.
That was some confusion last time.
We reduced the size of the canopy down to five feet rather than the forty-eight feet that was originally planned.
Excellent, thank you.
And the amendment merely indicates that, uh, the, uh, underground storage tank, instead of being one ten thousand gallon tank, will be bifurcated and will have a five thousand diesel, five thousand gasoline. And secondly, the, uh, three pumps that were authorized in the past will be replaced by four pumps. Uh, and the canopy will be as shown on the plan submitted to the planning board.
Any questions?
Yeah, I noticed there's a new engineer on this project now. So, I mean, has he engineered this site or just prepared this plan? I continue to be concerned that, that I don't feel there's enough vehicular circulation around this scheme to have two islands and pumps. And last time we asked for, to get copies of some standards for gas station design that would indicate what kind of space is needed. Do we have something?
And I, I've looked and I've been unable to get the specific.
There are standards. There are standards. So I think we need standards because I don't, I think this is a safety hazard personally. There's ten feet between the island and the face of the building. And I have never seen a gas station, the last couple of weeks I've gone around and looked at many, many gas stations. I just don't think this meets a safety standard. I talked to the building commissioner today and he said if the, if the planning board approves this, even if it's substandard, then he has to issue the permit for it. He doesn't have, have the ability to say, "This isn't safe. I can't do it." That if the planning board approves this, he's got to do that. And I don't think this is safe, and so I think, I think before we issue anything, we need to find out what the standards for gas station design and pump spacing and things like that.
Well, I, I mean, we don't have measurements here on these pumps.
Yeah, I scaled them.
Ten feet to the building?
It's ten feet from the island to the.
What's the space between the two pumps?
Between the two islands is nineteen feet.
So that, these two cars are going to.
Yeah.
Be in there, so if you've got.
And then another ten feet?
Uh, it's, uh, there's supposed to be a planting strip between the sidewalk and there, the previous plan. There's a planting strip there, so with an eighteen inch planting strip that leaves eleven and a half feet there.
Where is the planting strip?
It's not on the plan.
We took out the planting strip for, for safety and to provide greater access for the vehicles.
So that's a change. That should have been reported as a change.
And requested, and I would be opposed to making that change. I think that a planting island is important to this.
Well, I mean, it had to be come out because there would, there'd been no room to.
For the four pumps.
For all these pumps.
Well, we don't know that this is, this is designed towards standards. I think the three pump scheme that we approved last time fits in here nicely and is very consistent. People can line up at either side of the pumps and still traffic and circulate through the site. If somebody's, you know, parked at the pump, cars can still go around. Here, if somebody's parked at the pump, the cars will back out on the Granite Ave and everything else because there's no circulation space. I just, I, I personally don't think this is safe. And I know I won't approve it, I won't vote to approve it until I see some industry design standards for circulation space around these pumps.
Well, I, I think that everyone has been to a gas station. I was at the Mobil Station in Randall today because their prices were competitive. And, uh, I mean, their canopy, it was interesting. Their canopy only projected about four feet beyond the pumps itself. Uh, but the pumps seem to have significantly more space between them. And it, it, I mean, I think that visually, I mean, this might not be unsafe, but visually it looks, it looks pretty tight. And probably.
We, we made it tighter, um, obviously, to, uh, address the concern of the board to keep the canopy further back from the sidewalk. Uh, we had originally projected it forty-eight point seven feet and we shrunk it three feet to meet the aspirations of the board.
You shrunk the canopy three feet, but how did that affect the position of the pumps? The pumps that's of concern.
Well, when you shrink the canopy, you shrink the, the area because the, um, the, uh, inside the canopy has to be the fire suppression system.
So there are dimensional requirements for the canopy in relation to the pump? But you don't have the dimensional requirements for the traffic circulation around this pump?
For traffic circulation, I do not have. The, the other thing is instead of the planting strip were proposed and I, I showed before, but it would have to be approved by the signed review committee to have the, the rock and plantings and the welcome to Milton. Um, that would be on the north, the northeast corner of the property at the intersection of Wood and Granite Ave.
That softens the corner, but it doesn't soften the streetscape along Granite Avenue. It just softens that one little tiny bit of the corner.
That's correct.
And so the last time we were here, we were told that everything approved in the last one, including that planting strip, would be there. So today is the first time we see something where there's a proposal, we're gonna make that planting strip. I'd like to see standards for this gas station design because I think this is unsafe.
Yes, Alex.
You've mentioned that, I looked at this, as, as I say, I looked at this canopy at the Mobil Station in Randall and the canopy did, you know, part of the car was outside of the canopy when it was at the pump because the canopy only went about four feet, five feet beyond the top of the pump.
So it protected the person who was pumping the gas.
Exactly.
Not necessarily the whole car.
Not the whole car.
Not protecting the, the driver's side of the car or the other side.
And was this a self-serve gas station?
This was a self-serve.
So the canopy requirements and the fire suppressions requirements would be the same? Because it was self-serve.
I mean, either the Randall Station doesn't meet requirements or, or there's something, there's something. I think that we're going to have to, I'd like to ask the building inspector if he can give us some help here because, uh, he said to you, as I understand it, uh, if this is a substandard installation, I'm gonna have to approve it because you. You give your stamp of approval and it seems to me we need to coordinate with him to find out whether or not he thinks it's substandard.
Bill, I think you had your hand up earlier. Do you, do you have a comment on this?
I did. Um, number one on this list has the, uh, has the tank. I don't think that, I don't think you need to have the tank on yours.
Okay.
It's something that gets approved by the fire department and by the selectmen.
But it's been approved.
It's already been approved.
Okay.
But that's not applying for.
But us, us knowing where the tanks are is, is useful.
Besides, we can always reference their approval.
We're not going to, we're not going to make them move the tanks.
No, I'm just saying, authorizing the location of the tank is, is modified.
It's really not us. It doesn't have to be on the.
It's not up to this board. It's up to.
But we can, we can authorize it as long as it's already been authorized. It doesn't make any difference. It's gonna be whatever the selectmen authorize, we're gonna authorize.
Okay.
Do you have any information for us on dimensional requirements?
I do not.
Just thought I'd check. I, I mean, looking at the space, particularly the space between the station and the pumps, that ten feet is very narrow.
Yes, it is.
You, you, you looked at this last time and you asked them to move the, move the canopy and the pumps six feet to the north. Uh, I actually went there yesterday, met with Mr. Sheffield and said, "Change the six to a twelve," which is why it is as far up as it is. I know that the twelve now works with both driveways.
Okay, the twelve isn't an issue because you're moving that north. It's the moving, it's the east that's the problem.
Yep.
Yep. And, and what we're talking about is having it ten feet, not from the gas station, but from the sidewalk surrounding the gas station.
Oh, then that's even narrower.
To the sidewalk, right.
Yeah.
Right, so, no, so we have ten feet to the sidewalk and then another three feet to the station, so it'd be thirteen feet from the station.
Yeah, but, but the, in talking about a car making that turn, I mean, I can just see a car misjudging and going straight up over that sidewalk. It just, it does not look, I, I agree with Pete. It doesn't look wide enough. A careful driver who's paying attention, no problem.
Drives a compact car.
Who drives a compact car, yes.
But the Hummer that comes out there to.
One of the big H2s, yeah.
Get their fifty gallons.
And then you have nineteen feet on the middle.
Which pump is gonna be for the diesel?
I have no idea.
Because that would make a difference as well.
I believe it will be one of the outside pumps.
That would make a certain amount of.
Whether it's this one or this one.
Let's find out some more about, and, and it seems to me that if you want to convince us that this planting strip is going to be made up by some planting that you're gonna do with a stone in the middle of it, uh, I'd like to see what it's gonna look like.
We have the.
Well, I brought a picture and gave you a picture before of what.
I see that. And, and these are the plantings? What are the plantings? I, I know, I, that's a conceptual design.
Exactly.
I would like to, you know, if you want us to eliminate landscaping, it seems to me that you have to, you've got to be a little more specific as to what you're proposing.
It's also quite a narrow little strip compared with, it's a narrow strip. I mean, both in your conceptual and in the actual plan. It's, it doesn't replace, fully replace the eighteen inch planting border that was there originally.
I don't know if this new plan, I kind of interpreted the new plan because they took the part. What shows on the new plan is the layout of the planting area that we had accepted last time.
Mm-hmm.
Then when they were proposing the modifications, they took that space and put a parking space there. But now that parking space isn't there, so I assume it's going back to the old planting layout.
But we don't know for sure because it's not a complete plan.
Right, but, but is, is that the case?
I believe that's the case.
I just think they need something that.
But at that time, they had, um, air, air hoses there.
What's happening with the air?
There'll be no air at the gas station.
Because there isn't room to put the pumps in.
Um, we.
It's pretty tight to me.
We, we do not want cars blocking the.
Getting air for their tires.
Right, and blocking the traffic flow.
The smooth flow of gasoline traffic.
Exactly.
I would suggest either having your engineer provide you the dimensional requirements and the turning radius and how this is going to work or having him available at the next meeting. So we can question him fully.
But if he does come at the next meeting, I would like him to come armed with standards, not just say, you know, this is going to work.
But be able to reference.
Reference standards and have copies of standards that I know.
Well, let's, can we, can we, uh, let's enlist the building inspector and help us a little bit. Because if they come in with standards, we could always say we don't like these standards. And it, it seems to me that we, uh, we should, we should do a little work of our own to round up the standards, which is, this is something we did ask for last time. It isn't as though this is something we're springing on you.
Right.
It, it simply is that I, I think in the, at the end of the day, I have a feeling that this configuration isn't gonna work, but I'm willing to be shown wrong, but it looks pretty tight.
I'm all for, if it meets standards, I'm all for it because I, we've heard from people that he's a responsible owner. He runs a good business, provides a good service and things like that, so I'm all for him getting the improvement he can get to, to, you know, make the most of his business. But I, you know, what I'm. But I, you know, what I'm just concerned with the safety aspects.
We have to dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that what we're approving is to basic standards. And we're not convinced.
I will research standards and come back at the next meeting.
Great, and that would be.
You can send them along as soon as you find them.
That way we have a chance to review them.
I will do that.
Excellent. So our next meeting is May 26th. Bill, we don't have anything already. Is that a seven, 7 o'clock? What, do we have between 6:00?
6:40, 36 Central.
Okay, you're going to do 6:40. It's going to take us 20 minutes to sign that? All right, 7 o'clock?
I'd say that it might take you less, but you tell me.
But we don't want to sit here with dead air either.
You've taken a few months to get.
Informed us, that's a deadly thing.
We won't because then Bill can report on the public meeting for the East Milton Traffic Study.
And I say they should go to 6:50.
Yeah.
6:50?
Yes.
6:50 on the 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and we have three minutes before our next public hearing starts. So we have a letter which Alex drafted to Joe Prondak, the building commissioner, on 36 Central Avenue with spa as a permissible business use. And I will quickly read it to you, and the idea would be is if you all agree, we agreed that it was an acceptable use, if you agree with the language, we could sign it tonight and get it out to them. So the letter is, Dear Mr. Prondak, you have reported that interest has been expressed by a business which wishes to operate a spa at 36 Central Avenue. The type of spa requested would be a permissible use under the zoning for Central Avenue planned unit development. That zoning in section 3J2A allows, quote, "business use otherwise permissible in the business district", end quote, with certain exceptions not relevant to the proposed spa services. In paragraph two of the special permit and site plan approval for 36 Central Avenue, the planning board describes authorized uses of the commercial condominiums as follows, quote, "The commercial condominium units shall be exclusively for retail and office use", end quote. You have inquired whether the planning board considers the proposed spa services to be a retail use. The planning board is of the opinion that the sale of the proposed services to the public qualifies as a retail use. The planning board never intended to prohibit otherwise permissible sale of services to consumers at 36 Central Avenue. Sincerely, yours, Planning Board of Milton." Yes.
Question?
Yes.
What is a spa, what are the services in this spa?
Did he give you further details or did he just describe it as a day spa?
I, you recall, I asked what a spa was last time. Everyone appeared to know.
Last time they told us that.
So you describe what a spa is.
All right.
You should know because you probably go to them.
I have, yes, I have been to a spa, yes, thank you very much. Facials, manicures, pedicures, massages, pending if it's also got a salon in it, haircut. That covers your basics. Is that sufficient information?
Male and female, or just one, female?
Many do male and female, some are female only, so.
What I said in this letter is that the proposed spa was a legal use in the business district. So.
Oh, gosh. Adult services are specifically prohibited.
Exactly, you can't, you can't run a sexually oriented business in the, in the U D at Central Avenue.
That's right.
So that's an excluded use.
Excluded use, yes, so that question would not arise.
So it's almost like therapy, am I correct?
For many people, yes.
Well, you know, that body, is it Body Works over there on Bassett Street? Body Benefits, that's a spa.
That's a spa, yeah. In fact, there's a number.
And it's a retail use because anybody can walk in off the street and get their services. It's not appointment only.
Frequently, they'll also sell things like lotions, nail polishes, that sort of thing.
Hair products.
Thank you.
If there's a salon attached.
I certainly think that letter was well-prepared and well-articulated, so I would recommend that the board approve it and sign it.
All right, all set?
Yep.
Okay.
Should we authorize the chair to sign it on our behalf? Is that what it is?
I think that we can all sign it.
We're sitting here, we have a blue pen.
We can take a vote, we can take a vote.
I did say if you're all set, and you all nodded yes.
I'm sorry. No, 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 all set is not. It's not the same as a vote.
I make a motion that we approve this letter.
No, 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 hold on, we had actually voted this at the last meeting. So a new vote was not in fact required.
So it's only to sign the letter.
It was just whether or not you approved of the language.
I could use a massage right away now.
Well, I believe Body Benefits does have a gentleman's quarterly, so you could swing down and. Yes, we have the lighting, did we get the planting plan as well?
Yes.
All right.
And I sent that up.
It's time for our next one, we'll have to do it afterwards. All right, as we're doing, signing this letter, and then when you're done, just pass it down to Bill for delivery. The next item on our agenda is 683-685 Brush Hill Road. Reopen the public hearing on that, or continue the public hearing on that. Mr. Sheffield?
Good evening, I'm Attorney General Sheffield, I just have the pleasure of representing the honorary developer. And we have done significant things since the last meeting. And I will introduce Jim Burke to school with him with the board.
Malcolm?
Good evening, is that a good spot for the plan? Not too sure the audience, I'm sure will want to see it and.
They want to turn it a little bit.
Yeah.
Move it a little.
I can bring it up top if you'd like.
A little closer to us all and turn so that people in the audience can see it. But that's turned too much now.
I apologize, I wasn't available last time you had a hearing. It was discussed about changing the layout of the drive. And we've, we've changed that, we've come, we moved the drive a little bit further to the west, down towards the existing curb, kind of the drive, of the existing driveway, and put a little, what I call a kink into, into the road. It's, that in turn generated an additional waiver. We, the center line of the road, we had, we met the minimum planning board standards of 150 feet of the center line radius. The second radius that turned back to the left is 75 feet. We met with the DPW Wednesday, was it Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And discussed the layout. Their concern really with regards to the layout wasn't the 75 feet, it was actually the cul-de-sac itself. They wanted to make sure we could get an F-450 with an eight-foot plow around it. Say it again?
With an 11-foot blade.
An F-450 with 11-foot blade?
11-foot blade.
All right, well, we're, we're looking into that. And if it's, the outside radius will certainly make it, the interior radius, the island itself may be shrunk down a little bit. The pavement width all the way around is 18 feet, approaching the cul-de-sac as well as the main length of the roadway. We have slope granite edging as proposed earlier with a sidewalk on both sides now, but it switched backs on itself. In a sense, when I moved it to the west, I put the sidewalk on the easterly side, the upgradiant side, and then kept it switched back below the tree and put the sidewalk on the other side. So you have sidewalks on both sides, just not the entire length now. The sidewalk itself is four and a half feet wide with a two-foot grass strip between the roadway and the sidewalk itself. I know the neighbors requesting not having a sidewalk. The DPW did not have a concern with regards to it either way. They did request that we grade the road with at least a four to five feet of leveling area for snow removal. And the grading that we propose currently shows that. Another change from, after the DPW review, was the change in the drainage. They requested a solid bottom for the detention bases. I had open bottom plastic cul-de-sac chambers, which I was gonna use to kind of infiltrate some of the groundwater and take the benefit of that. The soils out there are really poor. It's a tight, compact till, fine sand and silt. There's zero gravel, we've done about five test pits now. And all of them very consistent with very little percolation going on for that. So what we did is we changed the chambers to a solid bottom, a hand core, basically a solid round pipe at considerable expense to the applicant. I know the neighbors requested an underground detention. And I just got it actually to work probably about two hours ago. So I've got to go back to the DPW and submit the recounts based on the reshaping of the detention basins themselves.
So that means it's a closed system, there won't be infiltration?
That is correct. The roof runoff, there will be requirements, we talked about that as well. There will be LID techniques used for all the house developments. In a sense, the drainage takes into account the front yards, the driveways, the roadway, but not the homes themselves. Each lot will be required to go in front of the DPW once again for utility connection permits as well as stormwater management for the new bylaw. Well, it's not that new anymore, but anytime you develop a lot, we have to go submit the plans for DPW review again. So we're prepared to use rain gardens and, you know, like I say, if underground leach pit is warranted for a leach pit with a, with an overflow pipe, that makes sense, we'll certainly propose that. Oh, the 12% grade. One of the big items that we changed was revising from 10% to 12% on the grades. It's another request that we heard from the neighbors to minimize the grading. I kept the 3% leveling area out front as well as through the cul-de-sac. I have a profile that I can show you behind the color up that gives you an idea of the amount of cut that has been reduced at, at the tree line specifically. And it certainly, we had that retaining wall, didn't make it disappear, but it certainly shortened it up quite a bit. The 12% was discussed as well with DPW. And the Mass Highway Design Manual actually allows for 30 mile per hour speeds on that grade. And I have a taffet with P tonight, did I forget it? Oh, you got it, good man. Which allows, which allows the 12% grade. As long as the stretch is not more than 500 feet. The 12% is about 250 feet with the interior of the lot. So as long as it's less than 500 feet, you can vary up to 2% in grade. And the minimum percentage grade for 30 miles per hour is 10%. Add the 2% allowance, you're right at that at 12, so.
11% add the 2, you're still within the.
No, I think, I think it's, it's 30 miles per hour, if I remember correctly, it's 10%, and then it goes to 12.
And with 11 plus 2.
I have 10 plus 2.
I don't think anybody wants 30 miles an hour in this road anywhere.
Yeah.
But I think the grading certainly has improved by going to 12% and cut down.
It certainly did.
Some gradient grading, which I think is, is a benefit. And I think it's, I think it's terrific that the, that DPW, you know, showed some flexibility in their design standards, so we've got an narrower pavement width than we'd normally allow. This will be the narrowest road in Milton approved by the board, I think.
No, we've done 18-foot roads before.
Okay.
Meg Lane.
Meg Lane, okay. Well, I'll take that back. But it's a win for this project as far as I'm concerned in terms of reducing roadway width and increasing the gradient in order to reduce the amount of grading, so I think that's terrific. I would prefer not to have a closed drainage system and try to get infiltration if the soils aren't going to infiltrate anyway.
The DPW, I thought Mr. Joe Lynch showed some good insight with regards to the cul-de-sac design with the open bottom. It really introduces stormwater into the gravel box for the roadway. And, you know, you'll have a freeze thaw and that road will just pop like crazy. And I never even thought of that, so I appreciate the suggestion, it was a good one.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I could have commented.
Okay.
I think that this road looks unsteadier.
That was the intent.
Good comment, Alex. Anybody else, Eddie?
No.
Anything, Pete, anything more?
Has there been further discussions with Dr. Adriani, Andriani about the driveway?
Yes, the conversations have been moving forward. I expected Anthony here tonight, but I did talk to him earlier in the week and has informed me that, that they are speaking, so.
Good. Progress is good?
One of the, one of the other issues too that DPW has with this particular roadway is that it's private, that they do not recommend, they will not recommend accepting it. Whether we put it up for acceptance or not, that'll be up to my client. But DPW at this point would not be inclined to accept it as a public way.
I think at the last meeting, your client indicated that he was fine with that. It's my recollection of it.
Yes.
Because the DPW didn't like the idea that the road surface went outside the right-of-way, which I always question myself, so, you know, I think that's fine. I don't know what that means in town relative to plowing because when the DPW says this has to meet their standards for plow, if it's a private way, wouldn't it be plowed privately?
It's supposed to be plowed privately, yes, if it's a private way.
There, yes, and honestly, there's just helpful notes from DPW directors saying, you know, this, we're gonna, if we ended up, if we plowed this, we use an F-450 with 11-foot blade.
But if the, if the homeowners association is hiring a private contractor to plow, you know, they'll have to have the right kind of equipment that can plow it.
True.
But designing it so for that sort of a plow seems to be a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah.
Either that or you design it for some other plow. But that's what they say.
As long as it doesn't make the radius of the, you know, of the cul-de-sac so big that we destroy some of what we're going to preserve.
Well, the cul-de-sac itself meets the town Milton standards. Except for the, there's no standard for the inside radius.
Okay.
So it.
So if we had to, you'd make the inside radius a little smaller?
Right, exactly. Right now, it's 18 feet all the way around as far as pavement width goes. If the 11-foot blade would need it, we'd just widen up the pavement a little bit. Another interesting note, DPW director requested was no edging on the interior island. My guess is would be for snow storage issues.
Bill, you had something?
When, we talked about the curbing at the edge of the road. Instead of being vertical, it is, it's sloped.
Right.
So it's slope granite so that the snow does go off of the road. When you get to the island, it is flat so that, yes, you could do storage in the middle. There's also a couple of trees up there that we're taking to work and trying to get one of them into that circle. So it is moving a little bit fluid up there. Is the issue of snow down by Dr. Andriani's. His property is up here and the road's down here. Getting the snow out of his driveway cannot take and put the snow down into the other road because now you're creating a worse condition for everybody else using the road if he decides to take and plow his driveway. So that is a, it is an issue. You can't say he has to plow the snow uphill, but there needs to be a snow storage area on his property to handle the majority of his snow. Taking and pushing all of his snow down to the road and then letting the road deal with his snow.
Right.
That's.
So that should be part of the conversations then?
Sure, yeah.
All right, anything else on board? All right, if not, we're going to invite members of the public to speak. So you gentlemen will step down and we'll let them step up as they choose.
I got a copy for everybody here, I think.
I'll get one from you. Put some added notes on it. Tim Kernan, 642 Brushill Road. And a member of the Neighborhood Association. I thought I would compile a list of conditions that at least are on our plate so that you would have them before you as you're considering your next steps. My guess is, correct me if I'm wrong, your approval of this project will result in the issuance of some order of conditions or some sort of requirements for design?
It's a site plan review, so there would be written requirements, yes.
So I, I thought that it would be worth giving this to you, which is basically our sense of what those are. And I believe that 90% of them have been met through the conversation tonight, so I think we're pretty happy. I won't read these, but I'll just highlight the bullet points. And that is that we've got a concern relative to the intersection of the road and Brushill Road. And I recognize they've moved their driveway a little bit to compensate a little bit for that. I think I'm still concerned that they're destroying the existing side, the stone wall and moving it. So I'd like to get a little more information on that. The significant tree preservation. I think we have an understanding that the significant trees will be sort of identified and they'll make every attempt to preserve them as best they possibly can. I think it's worth identifying sort of buffer zone management issues or concerns or policies and practices. There's going to be a 60-foot buffer zone along the Brushill Road edge. And I believe the rest of the property will have a 20-foot no build and a 40-foot do not disturb. Maybe it's the other way around. A 20-foot do not disturb and a 40-foot no build. We've singled out the southwest corner of Brushill Road where the stone wall intersects the Chapman property. And that's, we just thought there needed to be a little extra buffer put in that corner and suggested maybe a 75-foot radius from that corner. Just something to add a little buffer in that corner because of the visibility of Brushill Road from that angle. If you like, I can illustrate that a little bit with you. Maintenance of the existing trees and shrubs during the course of construction suggests that those be protected in some fashion. Maybe an arborist could identify the space around those trees for which protection needs to be granted in some form. We're glad to hear that the line of sight from Brushill Road as you're traversing Brushill Road and looking up the driveway, they've made some compensation to deal with that so that it doesn't look like a runway anymore. Happy to see that. The road width at 18 feet, I think that's a big plus. We're all very happy with that. Road grade, you know, our hope is that it be maintained as is. But I think 12 and 13% grade is certainly getting us a lot closer. And obviously, we did need to recognize the concerns of the DPW. So I think that that's, that's a, that's a win as well. The curbing, slope granite sidewalks. We don't want sidewalks on there, and I don't think there's any need for it. DPW seemed to be, could go either way. Let's push for no sidewalks. They're absolutely not unnecessary. Retaining walls, we asked that the retaining walls be made of natural materials and be limited as much as possible and the visibility be concealed. The new streetscape structures, in terms of posts and signage at the end of the driveways, be limited. Streetlights, utilities buried, drainage we've dealt with, landscape turnaround we're dealing with. Now, these are two, the last two items, I don't think we've really come to an agreement with the developer on, but I think we can continue to talk about it with them. A voluntary design review and building site layout and location of the lots. I'm sure they'll do a good job, but I think it would be really critical if we could get a design review group, maybe not to have any authority or control, but just to certainly work with the developers and provide them with some consulting and some insights to what we'd like to see. I'm sure they'll do a good job. We just want to avoid some of the catastrophes we've seen in the past. And the last item that I neglected to put on here, which I'm sure will be addressed by another member of the group, is that the right of way to Brushill Lane needs to be extinguished.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Please, on this? All right, thank you. We'll have to read through it, of course, to get the details. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak in front of the board? Anybody? Any more questions?
Done a good job.
Any more questions? Yes.
Was there clarification as to what the move from the driveway has been? They said they've moved it to the west, but I'd like to get a sense of how much they've moved it back to the original position? Or how much off from the original position they now have located the driveway?
If you could clarify that, that'd be great.
I was ready for this.
I rather thought you might be.
Kind of gives you an old layout of where the driveway is proposed now and where the existing driveway is now. The original driveway was more center aligned, right within the 50-foot layout.
You have an extra one. Great, thank you.
But it gives you an idea that where the curb, the existing curb cut is and where the proposed driveway is. I mean, those are actually, that's a field located design. The layout, like I said, was kind of created with the land court subdivision. And that's what we're dealing with, so. We've moved, one of the other changes we made was the radius, the entrance radius. I had 30 feet in there. I'm not too sure why. Probably just stuck in Mass Highway Design manuals. Close them down to 15 feet and DPW felt that was more than sufficient. So that also was able to tighten up that, the cut there, so.
Looks like there's a drainage structure right in the middle of your driveway?
Isn't that unfortunate? We are in the process of working with DPW. It's got to be obviously abandoned. Relocated either up the hill or we'll relocate a proposed drain that'll accomplish the same thing. If you look at it, it's right at the, it was installed when the drive, it looks like it was installed really to compensate for the driveway. Prevent stormwater going across. Because you have two catch basins 300 feet apart on either side of it, so it was definitely an add-in.
Any other questions? Yes.
Was the DPW director invited to this meeting? Tell us that at one of the previous meetings, you had asked that we have a meeting with the DPW director, all of us. I don't believe that happened. At least, we were certainly not made aware of it. And while I'm glad to hear there was a good discussion with them, I'm still, we're still looking for some more concessions on that driveway. I mean, it still destroys the existing driveway. And I'd like to find out whether or not, you know, the DPW is mandating this layout or whether it's coming from some other sources that we can find a way to work with.
What's mandating it is really the perpendicular nature of the road. We now have 40 feet. And I believe that's exactly what DPW director requested was a 40-foot perpendicular approach to the Brushill Road layout. And we're confined to the layout itself, so. It's, it's, it's as far over as we can get it, Tim. And, you know, and I switched the sidewalk to account for that, anticipating that. But like I say, as far as the sidewalk goes, you know, it's okay with me too.
Save some money.
There you go.
So you discussed the 90-degree, because that was my memory, is that was what was driving you.
DPW and I also promote and the fire department.
Fire department was the other one, okay.
They're looking at some 90-degree approach.
Bill, you have?
Fire and DPW both said it has to be at 90 degrees. The fire department wants it at 90 degrees. They, although the first truck to respond to this is probably going to be coming up the hill and taking a left in, the second and third vehicle in is coming from the right. And they want to be able to take and go straight in. If you look at the area to the left-hand side of the road, there is a flat area that goes back to that, to the trees in there. The DPW director wanted that area left clear for snow stacking. The fire department also wanted it such that when they take that turn, they don't want something hanging on the corner that they're going through. So both of them were of the, you know, 90 degrees, nothing to the left there.
Any other questions?
Was the DPW director invited to the meeting? Because I know that.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We didn't answer that. Bill, did you invite him to the meeting?
We did not invite him to the meeting. The, Mr. McDonald called and asked to have a meeting with Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch felt it was more important to have the meeting with the engineer and to be able to go over the particulars. He had that meeting yesterday morning at 8:30. I did go to the meeting.
But we were not.
He, he felt it was much more important to have the engineer and the engineer sitting and talking about it than.
But now that that's been done, well, I can't ask you to answer for him, but perhaps you might approach him and say, now that the two engineers have talked, the neighborhood would still like to have a chat.
I think, I think that we're reasonably happy with the way things are going. I don't suggest that there's big issues, but there was a request of yours and it would have been nice if we were able to.
What are the DPW issues?
Right now, the, like you say, the drainage, which, like I said, you know, I just got to work. So I'll be, I told them that I'd have it submitted to them by Friday or Monday. At this point, it looks like Monday only because of the UMass graduation to go to tomorrow. One down.
Congratulations.
And what did the neighbors want to talk to him about?
Well, I think it was just the 90-degree and maybe there's been a little bit of certification on the insistence on that tonight, so.
I think they were looking for some relief on the pavement width, which he's granted and on the gradient, which he's granted.
They've set the sidewalks as an issue for us, determined. So I don't think you have a great deal to talk with the DPW director about.
We may not. And I'm happy with that. I think, I think there's obviously a lot been done. I was just disappointed it didn't happen as you had suggested, which would have been.
I do think once this new roadway is built and they take the stones from the existing wall and put them in there and actually they'll narrow down perceptually, it'll be narrower than it is now. And when they take those stones and make the curve along there, it's going to look like it fits. I think they've done pretty well in terms of addressing that concern. Although I still fear that there's going to be a pretty big sized tree or two lost right up there. But it was a choice between taking the evergreen trees on one side, which opens up that whole field to the street, and taking the deciduous trees on the other side, you know.
There's, there's one down there that absolutely needs to come down. It's that 48-inch, it's a monster. It's just eaten alive. Yes, yeah, I talked with, I talked to John about it. There's a nice big one up, like big lot that, next to Mr. Andriani's house. It's certainly going to be safe, but.
So I think, I mean, I think between the changes here and the concessions that the DPW gave, I think we, you know, that you guys have really helped make some, you know, pretty good improvements to the plan. In terms of the sidewalk, my initial thought was we really don't need a sidewalk. But we've got five homes that there, there are very likely to be kids who are walking out of the neighborhood on a very steep road and coming down probably to catch school buses and things down at the bottom here. Although at first blush, I thought no sidewalks. I think, you know, for kids' safety.
Well, certainly you don't need a sidewalk around that circle at the end.
Yeah, right.
And my thought was that a crushed stone, something that they can walk on without getting.
The only problem I have with crushed stone on a steep gradient is it all washes down to the bottom of the hill and you've got an ongoing maintenance thing.
Well, this is a five-lot subdivision. There's one house there now that's very close to the road and probably will not take advantage of any sidewalks. And now we're down to four houses. And there's an upper lot that will probably be sold as an undeveloped lot, at least for foreseeable future. So that really leaves three houses going in here.
Well, when you say five lot and one there already, you're talking, they're already being Andriani's? Well, that's the sixth house. It's not the seventh.
So now we're down to four houses instead of five. So the number of houses that are going to require the sidewalk are going to be sort of less than the number of lots that are on there.
Do you have something?
I, I have a suggestion for the sidewalk material, and that is to look at the material that goes around Ternus Pond. If one, it doesn't move.
It's, it's still, you know, it's still a 12% grade and you're looking at a cut slope and you.
Something that binds that stuff.
I mean, the other might be the exposed aggregate that they've got at 88 Worth Street there, which they've got, you know, an exposed aggregate walkway, which looks like.
With it being a private road also, it's, it's something that the homeowners are going to need to maintain. You put some petuminous concrete down there, at least that's good for 15, 20 years.
They're not allowed to maintain it. It's going to come up.
Well, it's that potential.
So why start?
But I think, I think this, I think the crushed stone is worrisome because of the gradient of the.
Either, I think, I think either you build the sidewalk with petuminous concrete, especially with the grates, or you don't build it well.
You also are going to wind up dealing with, each one of these properties is going to have a certain amount of low-impact development BMPs built into the fronts to deal with the rain coming off the roofs, coming out of the garage areas, coming off the lot itself. Each one of these houses will have that, so. I mean, these are standards that EPA is going to implement this year. They'll be enforced next year when these houses are being built, so we know that they're coming. And we've been, I know that that was a lot of the discussion the other day, that this will be addressed on the individual lot.
All right.
I don't think anyone has gone across the street to use the sidewalk. So I would certainly, it would seem to me that perhaps the lower stretch of sidewalk is, we should be thinking about.
The more important.
As more important. Just because I can't imagine anyone crossing the street to use the sidewalk on a, on a lightly-used road. But I can see, I can see the utility of having a sidewalk at the.
At the lower part, especially where that curve is.
And where the steeper gradient is.
Yeah, where the steeper gradient is. I think that would make sense. All right, so for our next meeting, which will be on May 26, continue this to May 26, what would we like to see?
I think that we would like to see closure.
Closure works. But I was meaning particular deliverables from the developer.
I guess the first question is, are we in a position to pose a public hearing and move into the additional issues that we want to discuss?
Are you confident that?
I would think that we have to read their conditions and that we want to, we may want to discuss them. I think that we should keep it open.
If I may, I've prepared a revised waiver request letter.
Okay.
Excellent.
For you guys to.
I don't know if you've ever addressed all the waivers or not.
I don't think we have discussed the waivers. Okay, so let's keep it open. We'll continue it. Let's see, we have 310 granite at 650, so.
Are we reasonably comfortable with that sidewalk solution?
Just on the lower half of the road?
Yeah.
I certainly don't think we need one around the cul-de-sac or the upper half of the road. I guess.
Definitely not around the cul-de-sac.
No, sorry, you can't have this back, no. Hang on, I'll give this to you in two secs. One, two, three, and you have all the rest. Sorry, so I was saying, I don't think we need it around the cul-de-sac at all, I agree on that. I also agree that I don't think we need the upper part, so we're left with the question, do we need the lower part? Pete's point to the grade is the fact that the grade is steepest there. I think that would indicate that we probably need one there. The fact that the curve is tightest there would also indicate it, you know, it'd be nice not to have the, this sort of very standard sidewalk visible from Brushill Road, but it seems kind of odd to just terminate it before you get to where you can see it. So I think I'd like to think about the sidewalk a little bit more.
Okay, so they could eliminate it around the circle.
Around the circle, that upper half, that one on the left-hand side.
Well, Pete was still, was still considering the upper half.
I thought you were okay with just having the lower half. Are you still considering the upper half?
Yeah, I think, I don't think we need it around the circle.
Okay, so you can eliminate that.
Eliminate that, but the other one I'd like to think about.
All right, so let's think about both.
Now, let's think about how we could design this sidewalk to be as inobtrusive as possible if we do it.
I think that's reasonable.
Are we in a position to approve the subdivision with minor refinements? And perhaps at the next meeting, discuss the specific, you know, wording and drafting of the approval?
I don't think so. I think it'd be helpful to have your response to the comments that were handed out tonight, which obviously you've also seen for the first time tonight at our next meeting. We still have the question of the sidewalk and we have our own, we'll have our own questions of the public on those comments.
Yeah, and also, just as a matter of form, we want to take this under advisement so that we can think about it rather than rush into anything.
So we've been discussing this...
We have been discussing it and we've been refining it as we go along.
Yes, we have.
And giving you an approval in theory, which is, I think, what you're asking for, is, would be nice for you, but I don't think it would advance things greatly. I think that we're going to, we're going to get there, and hopefully we'll get there at the next meeting.
I was going to say, if all of the outstanding issues are addressed, if we know what the status of Dr. Adriani's property is with respect to the other, which I understand there are ongoing discussions, if all of these are addressed and our questions answered, I could see that we would be able to close the public hearing at the next meeting, assuming all outstanding points were resolved.
It's quite possible the Adriani issue may not be solved in two weeks, because I think that's what we're looking at, right?
That would be about two weeks, yes.
Yeah, so...
But that could, actually, he's here and he has his hands up, so, do you wish to comment?
We did meet, and another problem on my end is my orders are due on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I don't know what to do. I can talk to him on the twenty-fifth, that's where he's at.
That's fine, because we wouldn't be signing anything on the twenty-sixth. What we'd do is we would potentially close the public hearing, but that still requires us to do the writing and the discussing of the drafts. So there would still be time to continue that discussion.
I think our issue is really that we'll probably include a condition which says that Dr., Dr., the parties will work so that Dr. Adriani or that address number, whatever the address is there, has rights of access to use that road for his driveway and the road and driveway are, you know, designed not to preclude that. You know, something along there, so that we know that the driveway is going to come out onto this road as opposed to Brushill Road. That's what we're all trying to achieve, and I think if we write that as a condition, I don't think we have to see the design plan as long as they're, you know, they're required to work with his engineer to develop the plan that achieves that objective.
But before we put that paragraph in, we should be reasonably confident that we're, that our strides are being made to get there, so...
That's right.
But, yes.
I just have a question. So one of the conditions of the approval...
Yeah, come on up.
If it was approval, one of the conditions would be working something out with Dr. Adriani or actually giving him access would be one of the conditions?
Working something out with, yeah, because we would prefer not to have two openings in the stone wall that close together.
There's nothing to work out with Dr. Adriani if you're going to...
No, we need to know how you're doing.
No, there's no, look, he abuts this road, right? And, you know, if you're an abutter to a road, you know, presumably it would be not a good thing that he can't use it. What we want you to do is do something reasonable.
Oh, no, no.
And if necessary, we could specify something reasonable, but we wouldn't do anything that was, we wouldn't give away the store in his favor. We would, we would do something that was reasonable.
What we would prefer is that the two parties come together, come up with an agreement, and show us what that agreement is. We're not interested in defining the agreement for you unless we have to.
No, 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 and I, and we have been meeting and it's going very well. We have a great relationship, I think. But I just, I thought that if it's going to be one of the conditions that he gets access, there's really nothing to talk about or work out with him because you're giving it to him anyway, so...
Well, we have to know how...
There's access and access.
We have to know how the access would work.
I think we're on the same page, which is exactly how it's put together.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so we, what time did you say, Bill? Seven...
Seven-ten.
Seven-ten, continue to seven-ten on the twenty-sixth.
They gave twenty minutes for the gas station.
We're giving twenty minutes to the gas station, apparently.
I think that we should give half an hour at the gas station.
Seven-twenty?
Seven-fifteen.
He wants to split the difference. Are you okay with splitting the difference? All right, seven-fifteen, seven-fifteen then.
I'll be at seven-ten anyway.
All right, we have one order of business, Seventeen Canton Avenue is all business, yes?
Yes.
My understanding, okay.
I'm a Cantonian property developer. I'm pleased to represent the honor and developer of Seventeen Canton Avenue. This was approved two weeks ago at the last meeting. However, it was subject to a landscape plan that showed the revised... footprint of the building additions and the handicap ramp in the rear. And that has been submitted to the board and I would like the board to accept it.
Any questions?
It's acceptable to me. I think the changes are fine. They, you know, got the right building on the same plan, so that's a good thing. I do, I have since gone out and I've looked at that wall in, on High Street, and it definitely does need investment. There's no doubt that that, you know, that there should be, rather than just ignoring it, there should be work done on that wall.
There's no question about that, and the fact is that the approval requires that that be brought up to Snow.
Okay. Anything else?
We have to approve it, right?
Yes, we do, so I'm waiting for a motion.
So, move.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Any other business for us tonight? Not all entertained, a motion?
Move, we adjourn.
Good job.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.